Okay, we're ready to begin. City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we're here for fiscal year 2020. Panel on Criminal Justice Coordination. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my right by Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Shannon Sneed, 13th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District Member of the Committee, Council President Brandon Scott, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, who is staff to the Committee. Also have Rebecca Tab from the Council President's Office, Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Jack Young. This is Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, along with BPD and State's Attorney. Who's here from BPD?
Mr. Chair, I don't think BPD is here. I think that they have their own on Friday, right? Is that right?
They do, but they're listed as a supporting agency for this one, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that any, did you all give them notice that they needed to be here? Oh, okay.
I don't know who was confirmed, but they...
I'll reach out to BPD now.
Okay.
Okay, and then State's Attorney?
Good afternoon. Michael Schatz, Chief Deputy State's Attorney.
Oh, good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ganeshah, take it away.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And congratulations on the new position. Thrilled to have you back in city government.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back. So, I'll just take you through the slides. I know the most fun part of this for you guys is asking the questions, so I'll take you through the slides, and if you want to stop me, just let me know, then I'll stop for any further questions. So, the first service number is 617, approximately 3.6 million under this service description. This is a collaboration with local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. The SART falls under this, human trafficking, and HIDA. Some of the major budget items, 300 to combat human trafficking by awarding grants to community organizations. The budget also supports one additional criminal justice associate under the general funds, and this service also includes unallocated grant funding in anticipation of grants being given for SART. The two noted outputs are the number of collaborative working group meetings with the fiscal year 20 target, and then also individuals who receive human trafficking training at 1,700. Let me keep rolling, or do we need to pause there? Okay. Can I get the next slide? Sorry. Oh, should, do I need to do that? Oh, okay. I didn't learn how to do this before. Moving next. Okay, there we go. All right. The next one is 618, approximately 9.8 million. This service identifies evidence-based approaches to improve public safety and reduce crime outside of the traditional law enforcement context. Through this work, MLCJ strengthens the city's relationship with community stakeholders and designs effective public safety initiatives that are responsive to residents' priorities. This houses Safe Streets, supervises visitation, and manages the Youth Services Bureau contract with the Family League. Major budget items here, 3.6 million of state funding and 1.9 million of general funds for Safe Streets to support the underlying sites and the expansion to 10 sites. Also, the ROKA program, which is, I believe, on the BOE tomorrow. The city put in money to leverage the over $10 million that was given by philanthropic and private donors. Output for this one is conflict mediations through Safe Streets. That's at 1,500 for fiscal year 20, and then the effectiveness, young male ROKA participants. The goal for fiscal 20 is 175. The next one is service number 757, approximately 2.7 million. This service is responsible for managing CCTV network, and, let's see, we work with the Police Department, Baltimore City Office of Information Technology, MLCJ, and external stakeholders who help maintain and expand the program. City Watch also has a long-term place-based deterrent of violent crime and an effective investigation tool. This budget includes $750,000 for an annual subscription for gunshot detection. This is down from 150 was the initial subscription fee, and then I think that says $6.6 million from Bloomberg, but I actually believe it was $5 million. So, if you just want to correct that for the record. Output, number of ShotSpotter alerts that have been responded to. The fiscal year 20 target is 1,525, and the effectiveness, performance measurement is the number of arrests assisted and/or initiated by City Watch monitors. And in fiscal year 18, it says 174. That actually should be 274. That's a typo. Last, I believe, this is service number 758, approximately $1 million. This service houses the agency's management and administrative personnel. One of MLCJ's primary functions is to pursue grant funding and direct investment from federal, state, and philanthropic funders to assist in violence reduction goals. And so, the, this major budget item, the budget shows a significant decrease in grant funding from fiscal 2019. Unallocated grant funds for possible new awards has been moved to service 617, Criminal Justice Coordination, and service 618, Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to more accurately reflect the likely purposes of new grants. I think that's the last one. Yes. So, I'll stop here for any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Ganeshah. We've been joined by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District, I think that, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District, maybe that's twice, but two times can't hurt. Mr. President.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Director, and welcome back to City Hall, and welcome back to the budget process. I want to first start by talking about how important, as you know, this office is to me, and important this office is to the city's public safety strategy. I know that, want to also thank your office for restarting the gun meetings. I think that talking about guns and where they're coming from and being able to track down everything involving guns is extremely important when you talk about reducing violence in Baltimore, which we know, most of which is gun violence. But, actually, yesterday, you and I, we were on a panel, we talked about what we believe, and I know you believe the same thing, is the responsibility of the city to have a overall and comprehensive crime strategy. Can you talk a bit about what you believe should go into that, and how your office and in your role as Director of MLCJ, you'll be pulling all of the other agencies in to put forth something that benefits not just the policing side, but looks at the prevention, looks at diversion, all the other things that MLCJ can help to coordinate through all the other agencies?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. So, to your point, kind of the mantra that leads my work is, and I understand culturally, we always want to talk about that number, right? We want to, that's what we do on the corner, that's what we do in the walls of City Hall often, but I think that that conversation has to change, and I hope that I can be a part of that change. We need to talk about the environment that created that choice for somebody to pick up a gun. I've been, you know, talking to nauseam, these young people were not born with a gun in their hand, and they were not born violent. So, what do we need to do in order to deal with that comprehensive thing? And we also heard the Commissioner say yesterday, you know, police officers show up with guns, they show up with tasers, they show up with handcuffs. Those things are not going to help our young people get to where they need to go. And so, I've been talking to the Commissioner. One of the things that we've been looking at is a comprehensive public safety strategy. I've already talked to the Health Commissioner, met with her and her folks that are doing youth violence prevention. I have also talked to several people around the country who have put together programs like this. We're looking at how VRI will be part of it. The other thing that I think is a huge issue that we'll be looking at is the juvenile justice portion of this, right? So, one of the things that is really important to me is, I think we're referring youth to programs, and I've talked to DJS, I've sat down with them now three times, they're going to be a partner with me on this. We're referring them to services, but are these services working? Are these services meeting our youth where they need to be? Are they getting, you know, are they getting resources that are across town, you know, they're over west and they're being told to go, you know, over east? Are they, do they have the transportation? Are the mental health, you know, issues, the trauma, all that type of stuff being addressed? Or is it we just patting ourselves on the back, saying that we referred them somewhere, and we don't know if it's actually helping them to change the trajectory, right? So, the juvenile justice piece, as you know, Mr. President, under the consent decree, one of the things that happened was DOJ really wanted us to put all this kind of fancy stuff out there for juvenile justice and diversion. I said, "The system is broken. I can't even figure out what's going on." And so, let's do an assessment first to actually see what the problems are, and then we can put the fancy stuff on top of that. As you all may know, I bet about a month and a half ago, that diversion report came out. Initially, that was being led, before I got here, under Health and Human Services. That's been transferred to me. What I have done since then is, there was a children law and policy out of DC is the one that won the RFP. Luckily, Tiana, who's worked, doing that work, is from Baltimore, so she's hugely invested. She and I have talked several times a week. She actually identified some funds that I applied for yesterday through OJJP to actually have them continue to work with me on that, all of the recommendations that are in that report. So, bringing back together community groups, I've met with Kalia, met with several other youth groups, so that the, what we do for the youth is actually youth-led, and that we're hearing from them, and making sure that we're meeting their needs. The other thing that I've started to look back into is the Sidestep Program that I think you might be familiar with. That was something that was noted in the report. I don't know if, I'll just tell some of the council members who may not be familiar. When we were working on revamping the Western District, one of the things that had happened after the uprising is I had gone to West Baltimore and was talking to communities about what we need to do to be responsive to some of their needs. Out of a couple of conversations came a diversion program. But, one of the things that we heard was that the diversion program has to be in the community. So, first of all, when people are picked, when youth are picked up and brought downtown, mama and daddy don't always have money to come down and get them, pick them up, all sorts of things happen. So, can they be taken to the district? So, in that revamp, I asked for sight and sound separation to be put in the Western District so that they can be transported there. And then, number two, all of the resources that we're looking to be able to send youth to had to be in West Baltimore, so there was a way for them to get to it. It's in their neighborhood. When I resigned, that kind of fell to the wayside, and so, that's something that I'm going to pick back up and maybe even use as a pilot, because certainly, if it can work in the Western District, it could probably work in other districts. And so, all of that work, along with ROKA, along with some of the things that we're doing with Safe Streets, will build out part of the strategy as it relates to how do we look at what we're doing with our youth, and making sure that, like I said, it's comprehensive. The other thing that I'm doing is looking at this ARI list. It's over 6,000 people. I want to figure out a little bit more about the algorithm, how that's really put together, but I think we need to kind of slice and dice that.
Madam Director, if you could, I flew an alphabet, so everyone is not. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so, the ARI list is something that's put together by the Police Department. It's supposed to be the highest-risk folks in the city. As you probably know, most of the violence that's committed in our city is committed by a very small group of people. That list is 6,000 people. That's supposed to represent about 1% of our population. And so, what has been happening, I think previously, as it relates to public safety, is a geographic type of response. I feel like if we know who, then why don't we go to who and deal with those people and understand that just kind of locking them up. Now, there are some people that don't need to be on the street. We know that. But, for those who are really engaging in criminal behavior because they're hungry, or because somebody in their household is hungry, we need to find a way to deal with that. And so, I am going to work with the Police Department to, first of all, kind of see how they put that list together, and how can we segment that, so that we can have direct, direct services or response to those people who we know are causing the most violence. Another aspect that I'm looking at is something called hub and core. This is a concept that's been successful in other places, and what actually happens is, you have a group of people, police are there, different services, a name is brought to the table. Everybody kind of looks at this person, "Okay, yeah, they're in my system 12 times. Yeah, they've done this, da-da-da." Then we go and respond to those folks. So, everything that, everything that I'm doing out of, in trying to put together this public safety strategy, is people-focused, but comprehensive around all these things, jobs, education, economic, economic opportunity, all those different sorts of things. I don't want to keep going on and on, but does that kind of answer your question to a certain degree?
No. It does. It's about as much as I would expect one month into the job, and we look, we look forward, and the mayor's one month into the job, and I'm three weeks into the job, so we look forward to working with you and him. As you know, this body under previous administration asked for a comprehensive crime plan that we never got, but we, we know that Mayor Young believes, as he was a member of this body, when we asked for that plan, that we'll get one with this, and it will be focused not just on policing, but every aspect of the city. And over the next few months, we look forward to working with you and to helping shape that, but also to hear from you about, about that plan. My next question is about City Watch, which is service 757. So, there's been a lot said about City Watch and our CCTV system over the past few months, but also over the past few years. So, last year, this council, actually, every single council member was briefed about expansion of City Watch, that was going to happen. Part of it was going to be through grants and things like that, and I've heard from several of my council members that those, a lot of those cameras, one, aren't up, and two, aren't coming. Can we explain what happened with those, with that program, and how that expansion is no longer happening? I don't know if that's a question for you, or for finance, if you guys know what happened?
Well, I can say a little bit. Do you?
Just from a funding standpoint, there was the Bloomberg grant that paid for a certain number of cameras, but in terms of the implementation, you'd probably be more familiar about what is going on currently.
I think that there was Bloomberg, and we were also told that there was something with Comcast as well.
Yeah, we, there was some work going on behind the scenes to try to negotiate some kind of agreement to get more cameras, but I don't know where that is, but we can find, unless you know where that is.
Yeah, kind of given what, everything that happened.
So, Mr. Amoros, we'll make that another request to find out what happened with the proposed expansion of CCTV, CCTV in each of the 14 districts, so we can provide those colleagues an update. But, my second question about City Watch is, how many of the cameras are operational? Does anybody know?
So, you, good morning, Council President, or good afternoon. You read in the report last week about typically, our camera program is at about 93%. So, that's a pretty standard number across the board, given the type of systems that we have. We experience more issues with our wireless systems this time of year with tree foliage. We have cameras down due to cars knocking over camera poles, so we're typically always at 98% and above, and that's sort of been our historical number. When the reporter wrote the story, I sort of did some fact-finding and spoke with folks in Chicago and New York and Houston, and they also experience a similar, you know, rate of cameras out, so.
Yep, I think that that's, as you know, I know exactly how that works. I think what will probably be helpful, and Mr. Amoros, I'll add this to the list, is that if every month, the council has provided a status update of how, where the camera system is, I think that'll just, that'll quell things, but it'll also keep everyone in the loop. And then, this question is about resources for City Watch, and also about have we, two things. One, have we done a analysis of our system as we have it now to see, because my guess is that some of the cameras are probably past their lifecycle, right? They're not even up to a point where we should be even using them. But also, have we talked with other camera vendors and operators about updating the system? And more importantly for me, and we had this discussion at length last year, when we had a gentleman in here trying to put a spy plane back in the sky, how many of the cameras are actually manned and watched all day long? And what, what are our actually needs in that? So, for me, I would much rather have people who are watching the cameras being able to relay that information, having City Watch work at least somewhat like it used to when we had more people staffing City Watch up. Where are we as far as staffing those cameras as well?
So, I'm gonna start with your first question. So, we did a 60-camera expansion through the Bloomberg project. Those are mainly East and West Baltimore. Since that time, I've used, I've taken some of our resources to upgrade aging infrastructure. So, we've upgraded servers that were from 2008. We've partnered with HABC, who's our partner in City Watch, to upgrade some of their legacy wireless systems. We hope to later this year convert the cameras at Gilmore Homes to fiber, which will make it a much more reliable system of cameras. You are right, there are cameras that aren't out there that are not working just because they need to be replaced, and we're waiting for replacements, and those are inclusive of that 8% down number that was reported. So, we continually order cameras and replace them. With having that many, you know, we replace 10, and then the next week, you know, we might have 10 more that age out. So, it's a never-ending process, and we have the vendor out every day. They've been our vendor for a very long time, and they know our system really well. So, in terms of moving forward, our vendor will be extended through the end of this year, and then it will go back out to competitive bid. So, we may end up with a new vendor in the next calendar year. That may also include an upgrade to our video management system, and we will be working with BPD to sort of strategize about how to best use City Watch moving forward. There are ways to, that we are unique in that we use monitors and do proactive monitoring. A lot of other cities aren't doing that, but I do think there's technology that we can look to in the future that, you know, sort of leverages humans monitoring cameras, and then there's sort of the AI aspect of it, is can you, you know, use those programs that are available. Right now, we utilize a private vendor called Crown Security. They've been our longtime vendor. They hire retired police officers who monitor the cameras. There are, during peak hours, always at least five or seven monitors working. That does not include sworn personnel who are assigned to City Watch. I think it's about three or four right now. And in addition, there are monitoring capabilities at the districts. So, if in the Southern District, they're doing, you know, a special investigation, then they can monitor their cameras, for example, in Pig Town from the district themselves. So.
Thank you, and I'm gonna follow up offline about expansion, because there are some that we were told that were coming that didn't come, but.
And yeah, please tell me about the locations that you are interested in, for sure, definitely.
Will do. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Martin, can you talk a little bit about Safe Streets in terms of, we have seven sites right now, and I think we had been talking about expanding to nine or 10, what those other sites are?
Yeah, so, I'll give an overview, and then if you want further details, I do have Anisha here today, who's been leading that effort for us, and she can get much more granular for you. So, there were four original sites, if you will, and there's going to be an expansion to 10, which I believe leads to about 80 to 90 additional staff members. These are in some of the areas that we have the highest level of violence. The other thing that we're looking at, and we're actually having a meeting this week on not only the expansion and opening those sites, but how we can better serve not only the folks that are working in those sites, because as you know, they've come from challenged backgrounds as well, which is why they're great at their jobs, but then also, how can we serve the folks? So, once we intervene and stop a violent act from happening, how do we then provide services or outreach or referrals so that those acts don't reoccur? So, if you want, do you want further details about the opens, the openings of the different sites?
Yeah, just what the specific sites are, in addition to the four existing. Sorry. It's spaced out there for a minute.
No problem. I'll put you to sleep.
No, no, you didn't.
Hello. We, as Ganeshah mentioned, we have four sites, and we opened six more. We have one site opening in Brooklyn, one that just had a grand opening in Bel Air Edison, one in Belvedere area of Park Heights, one in the Franklin Square community next to Bon Secours Hospital, one in Woodburn in northeast Baltimore, and one at Penn North, which is a part of the Sandtown community.
Is that Penn North one operating autonomously from the Sandtown Winchester one?
They are working together, so our Sandtown site actually promoted quite a few individuals for the expansion, so they're hiring together, they're canvassing together, because they're pretty much covering a very similar area.
Right. Okay. Okay. I got questions about cameras, but I'll come back. Thank you very much. We've been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen from the 1st District, and Councilman Yitzhak Shleifer from the 5th District, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. The President asked my question about City Watch. I feel like the residents in Berea and McEldery Park were definitely going to be like, "Where are the City Watch cameras coming to my neighborhood?" Because they've sat in different meetings where they said, "Oh, they're coming." They picked up signage and all of the above, so they thought that we were coming. That's like the number one question that I often get, like, "Why can't we get a camera on this neighborhood where, this corner where you know everything's happening?" So, it's more of a comment than anything.
So, but I do want to, because I specifically prepared for you today, and so, I ask about that, and it was my understanding there was maybe 14 cameras that were coming to the McEldery Park, oh, am I messing that up?
We did 12 cameras in Broadway.
Oh, 12 cameras in Broadway East, okay. And so, what you're telling me is that Berea and McEldery Park were told, okay. I think, and what we probably should do is have a meeting offline, because I think, obviously, I wasn't here, but trying to kind of piece things together. There was a conversation that the cameras that were part of that expansion also covered, they felt like the areas were so close that they were, they covered the two. So, we may just need to kind of sit down and have a conversation about that, because I definitely want you to have a response to your constituents.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Okay.
Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Director Martin.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to ask a couple more questions related to cameras. So, in the budget book, it mentions, and you gave us the correction, as it relates to the number of arrests assisted or initiated by City Watch, and the correct number for FY18 was 274. But, the budget book says that the decrease was related to several factors, including deterrence of crime within the crime areas. Can you, can you, so what are the other factors?
I spoke with my staff about that. We feel like that was a misprint. We really couldn't figure out.
I can't either.
Yeah, we really couldn't figure that out. As I was preparing for the, preparing for the budget hearing, that's not what we submitted, at least that we don't believe that's what we submitted, so I can't really.
Okay. And so, according to the description, there's approximately 800 crime cameras associated with this.
About 750.
Okay. And even with the actual number of 274 for FY18, I mean, why are so few arrests associated with our cameras? And it appears that we, I know you mentioned five, I guess, people who are monitoring on a, on a round, round-the-clock basis, and then these other individuals who, either at the district or where else. But, like, at one point, we could have five people monitoring 750 cameras?
Yeah, so, I had the exact same questions that you're having, as I was kind of looking and looking at City Watch. First of all, when I first got here, there was a request on my desk to add more people to City Watch, but I'm kind of, I'm always thinking about how to best use our resources, so I needed to understand what we were doing already before we just throw more people at a problem.
Right.
before we just throw more people at a problem. So what I was told, and just so you know, because like I said, I have the same questions, this is a part of an ongoing kind of briefing and looking at the effectiveness of CCTV and City Watch that I've already talked to the Commissioner about and his Chief of Staff. So we can definitely circle back around with you as I look further into it. But what I have up to this point is, they, first of all, the numbers that you see are the self-initiated. So they come in and look at cameras based upon crime trends. So if there was a spike, or if there was something going on, or they know that there's an investigation, or there's other issues, they pay attention to cameras in that way. Apparently, we kind of stand alone in having anybody watching those cameras. I think most people use CCTV as a look back. So something that happens there, some crime, homicide, something like that, and then they go back and look and they find any evidence. So you're correct, they're not monitoring those at all times. They monitor them based upon crime patterns and trends.
Yeah, because, and I mean, I'm a proponent for cameras. When I look at the numbers, it's difficult to be a proponent for cameras, because I don't, I can't argue that it's a deterrent, or if it's being used, you know, in the actual arrest. Because I know personally some corners where there are cameras, that if I was hired from nine to five to watch that one camera, I could make a quarter of these, I could initiate a quarter of these arrests just in one day. I mean, based upon the activity that's happening right underneath that camera. So it's great to have the cameras, but if we don't have the monitoring piece in place, they're just, they're just fixtures hanging in the community. My second question is related to ShotSpot.
Yes, sir.
And so how, can you speak to how it's working? Is it, is it working as effective as we were hoping? I know that when we get reports, and I think Councilman Costello can attest to this, especially around the Jewett Heights, Upton area, you know, we'll get reports to say that officers responded based upon ShotSpotter. But, I mean, it's after the crime has happened. So like, what, what, I'm trying to figure out what, what do we, what benefit are we getting from ShotSpot?
Right. So I will tell you that's one of the programs that I'm, let me back up. So one of the things that I've done since I've come to this office, because I have the benefit, obviously, of having worked at the Police Department, is that we have all these disparate technologies. How are they all working together to actually reduce violent crime? So I've actually asked for a weekly meeting starting next week where we can kind of stay on top of that. We have all of that technology that we have to revamp and fix under the consent decree, which Danny Murphy is actively working on. While we're doing that, we also need to be looking at all of these other kind of things. And how is that all related together? How is that information making it from the watch center and the intel folks down to the line officers that are out there patrolling every day? That's something that the department needs a lot of work on. But I will tell you that I feel comfortable and confident in the team that the Commissioner has put together, simply because I've seen them do it in New Orleans. They put together a system called MAX, which draws in all this information, and they're able to utilize that in the comstat perspective. And then the Commissioner is very dedicated to making sure that that information makes it down to the troop level. So what I know from my briefing since I've been back about ShotSpotter is that a couple of things are happening. First of all, we're knowing about shots, I mean, almost 80% of shots that we didn't know about before. The other thing that's happening is the forensic folks have been very responsive, based on what I've talked to about, to the ShotSpotter person that's been assigned to Baltimore. They have been very responsive in responding to scenes and actually picking up the shell casings and doing testing on them. And they have been able to relate some of those shell casings that they picked up to other homicides in the area. The, what I think needs to be improved upon, and this happens a lot when we buy technology, there's a technology component, but then there is a piece of personnel and resources component in the Police Department that's not really thought about. So when you have, you know, shifts that are going out short, and you don't have enough people while we're trying to do all the recruitment, and they've made great strides in that, when you add on calls because of ShotSpotter, then you need to add on people to respond as well. So I think that's something that the Commissioner, I made him aware of, and I know that they're working on. So what I would say up to this point, there needs to be ongoing analysis, which I'll continue to do. Up to this point, it's given us better situational awareness of the violence that's occurring. It's given us better evidence as far as the lab goes. What has to, what has to happen better is for those that evidence that didn't help us to actually prosecute and close out cases. There is a statistic, and I can get it to you, where how many ShotSpotter callouts or ShotSpotter hits have helped actually prosecute folks. So I think that's something else that we should pay more attention to. And then the last thing that I'll say is, we have to make sure that the information that we get on the ground after those shots are fired makes it back to the investigators. That piece, I think, is lacking. And I have brought that to their attention, and it's my understanding that it's something that they're working on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I clarify one thing on that?
Sure.
So as far as the City Watch program, of course, we couldn't properly, you can't staff, you can't get enough people to actually watch the cameras. But the way it's worked in the City Watch program, and I've gone down there numerous times, is that when a call comes into 911, they pull it up on the map, that location pops up on the screen, and then they can zoom in on the cameras that are in those locations. So it actually does assist the officers on the street to know what they're going into before they get there, no direction of travel of, you know, potential suspect. And it also helps them have the information beforehand, which I think has been wildly successful. And so those five people, and sometimes, a lot of times, there's retirees or people on light duty who are watching these cameras, I think it's a tremendous asset to the crime fight. But those five people, it is, it is pretty helpful for them to do it the way that they are currently doing it by following that. So I don't think the intention was ever really for anybody to watch every camera 24/7. In addition to that, on the district level, and now that the DDUs are going back, the detectives are going back to the districts, that also, at the district level, they also have access to these cameras. And so I can tell you for a fact that on the district level, the commanders and investigators utilized their access to the cameras. So although we may only have a set number of people designated directly to looking at these cameras, there's far more people in the Police Department who have access and are using it on their day-to-day work. And so I think, obviously, we need to expand the cameras even more, but not to be deterred by whatever number of staffing they have assigned to physically looking at those cameras.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilman.
So to reiterate my point, if with the department that's challenged with manpower, if the cameras aren't also being used for enforcement, then they're not being fully used?
Well, and I think one of the things that I hear from you, and I wrote down to follow back on, is a component that's missing is the community. Because if I hear you correctly, as a, I mean, you're obviously speaking to me as a Councilman, but you're speaking to me as a community member, that you, what you observe is that there's hand-to-hands, or there's some sort of things that are going on on street corners, and these cameras are not being helpful in stopping that. So to me, what I wrote down and what I want to follow back on is, how do we create a community component of passing on information so that information can be utilized in the crime fight? That's, that's what I hear from you, and I think that's what I think we need to do.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Martin, for being here. Like some of my previous colleagues, I will ask a couple of questions around City Watch. I do recognize, again, some of the fluctuation in the numbers, and you kind of mentioned that there may be some discrepancies there. But my question is also related to the funding and the effectiveness. So is your contention that the effectiveness is really rooted in the funding or the precarious funding situation it's in now?
No.
In terms of grant funding? And then if that's the issue, then also, where are also you looking in terms of grant funds? Because I recognize the Bloomberg grant, it was a one-time event. But then also, where are you looking in terms of funding?
So that has not been something that I've worked on since I've been back, because we do have the Bloomberg funds. And that's part of, I think City Watch is funded to a certain degree through general funds. So it hasn't come to my attention per se that there's a huge deficit that we need to figure out. But certainly, in order to make sure that the program continues and is, it can expand the way that we have the request here, that's something that I'll need to look into.
And then, again, back to the number of the arrests assisted by the monitors, again, could you kind of speak to that one again? Because again, I'm looking at the numbers and I think to what Councilman Pinkett was referring to, just seeing the numbers, and you mentioned them not necessarily adding up, trying to figure out, going from the 750 to the 270 to 350, what's happening there?
So one of the things that I was told, I haven't vetted this information, is that, first of all, we've had a decline in arrests across the city, period, number one. So that kind of falls in line with that. But then, number two, what I've been told anecdotally is that marijuana arrests, when they plummeted, that calls for, or that is the reason why you have that huge decrease. When it no longer was criminal, it was more a civil citation. I guess they were having lots and lots of callouts over the radio because they saw marijuana either use or something like that. And so anecdotally, I've been told that that's in large part why those numbers have gone down so significantly.
Right. And just thinking about the year and the time, and so looking at FY17, 18, that shift, and then looking at 19 and 20, it's pretty consistent that the 350 is as far as the goal. And I think that's kind of where you want to be, where you think the right place is?
That's what I've been, that analysis was done by BPD, and that's what I think they feel like they can do. I do have a number here, Elise, you might be able to put your hand on it. How many arrests or violent?
So, 25% of the arrests that occurred in FY18 were for violent crime. So handgun, robbery, assault. Also, last year, 22 handguns were recovered. And then so far this year for 2019, we're at 149 arrests and 10 handgun seizures for this year.
Okay.
Given the increase in cameras, we added, you know, 80 cameras this year. That's why we made the goal closer to 350 for the upcoming years. We didn't want to make it a giant, you know, unattainable goal. But we sort of are going to be reworking about how City Watch is used in the larger crime plan. So, you know, we don't want to say we're going to go out and make 600 arrests, when we don't feel that that's reasonable.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise.
Thank you. Hi, Ganeshia.
Hello.
My comments, and I guess your response, is going to be focused on elder abuse, which a number of people seem to avoid, because there has been an uptick in elder abuse in different ways, in different forms. And as a member that sits on the Aging Commission, we have seen an increase over the years in this in many different ways. But I'm gonna, I guess, kind of phrase it in a way, all of us on the council have areas in our district that have been, or blocks, or hotspots of drug abuse and use and shootings and so on since the 60s and 70s. And in those areas, there have been, and are now, aging, mature seniors, 60 and over, that, you know, their homes have been paid for, they stay in that area. Some of them want to leave but can't leave, but they have to bear with the problems that go on there. And I have, I can think of three areas in my district, the 3,000 Block of Spalding, which is in Park Heights, the Norfolk and Chelsea, which is in Forest Park, and then we have Queensberry. These have been areas just forever have been a problem. And as council members, we get calls from these areas where they will report, you know, issues with our youth. And then there are some older adults that still participate in that illegal activity and guns as well. But we have these people in the community that are just wonderful citizens, and they're abused in so many ways by intimidation, sexual abuse, just, they're caught up in all of this, and they seem to be left out. And I kind of bring this up because this happens to be Elder Abuse Worldwide Month and Day. And I think, again, we need to start thinking outside of the box. Of course, we have to pay a lot of attention to our youth, but we also have to really start now handling, because some of these youth go, they go back to these homes. And some of the seniors are also held hostage in their own homes. It's just so many different problems that stem from the older adult. And we have to start including them in some of your performance measures. It's just another way of thinking outside the box and trying to helping with the, help with the issues.
So, thank you, Madam Vice President. There are a couple of things that your question has brought to mind. Number one, one of the things under the consent decree are micro-community policing plans. And those were very important to me. It's actually something that I advocated to be in the consent decree. Stole the idea from Seattle and wanted it to be improved upon for Baltimore City. I've been in contact with Deputy Commissioner Danny Murphy about how we can really make that something that's responsive to our communities. We, you know, everybody's, you know, it can be a different issue from street to street to street. So how do we come up with a strategy that's actually responsive to the issues in the community? I think when the micro-community policing plan strategy comes out, I'm going to encourage Danny and his team to actually bring this issue up in your district. So that's something that, because that, that's something that has to have a huge community component to it. I mean, it absolutely has to. And so I think that that's something that should be talked about in the micro-community policing plan for your district, number one. And then, number two, one thing that I'll take away from this, I was on Baltimore County Executive Johnny O's Transition Team for Public Safety, and there was a young woman who brought this very same issue up, and they came up with some sort of solution. I don't remember what it was, but they came up with a solution around elder abuse because she brought up the same issues that you're talking about. I will circle back around to that woman and see what it was that they put together and see if it's not something that we can work for here in Baltimore.
Thank you. And also on that note, I'd like to invite you, because you're not, your office isn't on this list, and I also would like to invite all the council members, that there's going to be a special meeting, Friday, June 14th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Zeta Center. And it's basically an event that, it's a collaborative event at that particular senior center for the entire city. And it's on elder abuse and just all types of things that you deal with. I know the Health Department is invited. In fact, they're one of the main sponsors. But the states, there's going to be representatives from the state's Attorney's Office and also the Baltimore City Police Department.
Okay, what time?
It's at 11:00 a.m. And also, council members, if you'd like to join in on this event either, I mean, also, you're definitely welcome to come.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Director Martin. First off, thank you for your office's support of our comprehensive youth trauma work, particularly Tyrone. Thank you also for your office's support of the work we're doing around sex work in Brooklyn, Curtis Bay, and Highland Town. Daisy has been extraordinary. So thank you for that. On that topic, I'm curious how you are thinking about On that topic, I'm curious how you are thinking about the opioid crisis, as well as sex work. These are issues that, historically in Baltimore, we have, at times, taken a zero-tolerance approach, at other times, started to view more through the lens of public health. We are sort of evolving as a city, I think, when it comes to how we treat substance use disorder. And, again, I think, thinking on sort of sex work is also evolving, both in Baltimore and nationally. In other places, there are attempts to either decriminalize or fully legalize. So, just wanted to hear how you were thinking about these two issues.
Sure, so two things. On the opioid crisis, I do, I think it is a public health issue. I do not think it's something that can be solved by the criminal justice system. I was a huge proponent to bring LEAD here to our city. One of the things that I've been in conversations with Tyrone about, is actually, how do we revamp if we need to, or expand LEAD? Is everybody familiar with the LEAD program? Right. So, I think that that is something that has been proven to work, and something that we might need to look at expanding, particularly in the southern, where we have the overdose capital of the city. You know, Major Brown is over there, struggling on a regular basis, trying to figure out how to deal with the overdoses over there. And as a police officer, other than Narcan, they don't have anything else. And so, I think that we need to help and buttress her efforts over there, maybe with LEAD or something else like that. As far as sex work goes, I'll have to speak for, you know, my previous time here in the city government, and then have to go back and kind of do some research with Daisy on where we are on that. Violent crime has been the kind of the first thing that I've been looking at in the last month and a half. But I, too, I think that we often talk about the act at the end. We're not talking about all of the things that happened before, that the sexual abuse, the trauma, the reasons why, both drug abuse and/or lack of resources, food, hunger, those sorts of things that are affecting people that are out in the sex work. So, I think that we do have to be thoughtful about it. I have seen the recent reports about decriminalizing it. I'd have to do more research to understand, kind of, because I've seen both reports that come off on both sides, how that could be helpful, and how it would, and I'm not sure how that would play in our city. But I know it's a huge issue in many of you guys' district, and so, I'll talk with Daisy to see if there's not some way to buttress the good work that she's already been doing. The last thing that I'll say, and I'm not sure the Police Department was doing it, is doing it now, but they were doing it when I left, they created a task force to actually go after and trace back from a death of an overdose, an overdose death, to pick up the phone and trace back to the person who actually sold them the drugs that caused them the overdose, and prosecute those people. And I love that idea, because we're going after the folks who are actually perpetrating these horrendous things in our communities. So, if that's not something that they're still doing, I would probably talk to them about reinitiating that.
Yeah. Thank you for that, and, again, for sort of the open-minded way in which I think you approach these issues. I know that Open Society Institute has been a really great partner in a lot of this work. There are some excellent community groups that are deeply involved, that you already know. And I think, again, if we can really get to the root cause of some of the trauma and violence that people in our communities experience, as well as aggressively attack housing instability, unemployment, and all of the other maladies that lead folks toward abusing substances, you know, I think we will dramatically reduce it versus just locking people up, which we know has not worked.
I totally agree. And Councilman, at least when I was looking at human trafficking a couple of years ago, something that was very surprising to me, one of the things that helps to get them out of that life is to actually put them in stable housing. There's a complete lack of that. So, again, I think we always talk about the end product, and we don't really look at the entire pipeline. There is a person in my office, Tom Stack, who the Councilman is, Burnett is familiar with, who's working on some of those issues. But I think that, once we identify those, then we have to start lifting them up as a body, and then start asking the folks who want to do good work in the city, to focus those resources where we know that they'll help those victims the most.
Yeah, and then, apologies, Mr. Chair, the last thing I would say is, I think it's really important, for any of this, that, you know, to the President's point earlier, and just generally, that we not operate in silos.
Absolutely.
Right, we know that there's a lot of good work happening
Absolutely.
around the city, and I think part of your mandate, and the uniqueness of your office, is that you can really be a convener, and pull some of those disparate players together, and, you know, whether it's Ceasefire, or OSI, or any of the groups, just be the space that bridges people together, and that we don't get lost in the silos.
Well, one of the, back to Mr. President's point, one of the reasons why we're looking at a comprehensive public safety strategy, and an idea, something that they did in New Orleans, which I love, and I've talked to a couple of different people about, or talked to, is in their public safety collaborative strategy, they had one entity, if you will, with all of the partners underneath, right? So, they had, if Ceasefire, or, you know, whomever in the violence, in the violence reduction strategy needed some sort of service, it's not all over the place. There's a cadre, I think they all had about 300 partnerships, that you can go to those folks and say, how can you help? And what I want to do, to improve upon that a little bit, is we always hear from the grassroots groups, right, in our city, that the money goes to the large, you know, white nonprofits, and it never makes it back down to the community level. So, one of the things that I want to do in this space, is to have all those large organizations that know how to go after those big dollars, then get some of those grassroots, right? So, like, I always use the example of, you know, Out for Justice, very grassroots, right? And then, you have ROKA, who was able to go out and raise all this money. They're both doing good work, they're both trying to save our youth from dying and from being shot. But can ROKA help a place like Out for Justice build that backend infrastructure, so that they can actually get those grants? And can Out for Justice then help places like ROKA to actually be responsive to the communities that they know the best? And so, I'm hoping in that space, we can start building a bridge from the two Baltimores as it relates to funding, and the actual programmatic space as it relates to us trying to deal with all of these important issues that you guys have brought up today.
Thank you, ma'am.
We've been joined by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Burnett with the last questions.
So, I know we're running on time. I would, I was hoping we did have an opportunity to go into some of the outcomes, because they're not included in this year's budget book for ROKA, but I'll request a meeting to get an update on where that stands.
Please do.
And I guess, can we put that as a, Mr. Chair, can we put that as a request for the performance measures, the current status of performance measures for ROKA, that are outlined in the budget book, but I'm guessing the timing didn't align? I'm not sure why they aren't in here, but I would want information on where that stands.
Absolutely, I had ROKA on hand here to answer any of those questions, but certainly, I mean, a briefing, whatever you need on ROKA. I think the more I learn about it, the better we are referring young people to their services. So, anybody who wants to know anything about ROKA, just let me know, and I'll make sure that we're available to answer those questions.
Okay. And then, just lastly, just a statement, just wanted to thank you and your office and your team for your continued commitment to helping with the issue of human trafficking, running the Human Trafficking Collaborative, getting the grant funds out. It's made a big impact in a short amount of time, so thank you for continuing to work on that with us.
Well, thank you for your guidance and your leadership on that. It's made a big difference to make sure that those funds do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Director Martin. This hearing is now in recess as we transition to the state's Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you.